I expect everyone's time frame to start the meeting, so if you could, let's join me in the pledge allegiance. All right, all right, thank you. Just go ahead and do roll call and we're going to show that Council Harms is not present as well as Council Rahm. And then move on to any changes to our agenda. I'm not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and move into our public comment. There's opportunity to come forward and talk to us and and leave the podium over there open for anyone that would like to speak to the council or anyone online. And come on up, Tom.
I've got three things to address.
If you could just name and address.
Oh, sorry, Doug Iverson. And I break things. I live on Summit Drive. On June 28th, the Supreme Court issued a matter that cities can punish unhoused people for sleeping in public even though they have no place else to go. Now, I realize that this is just a, an issue that has come up recently. I was here when Sergeant Steve did his presentation. And most of that was based on the Oregon laws, which used, emphasized the 72 hours type thing, but Grants Pass has laws on the books which were what the Supreme Court was talking about. And their time limit is 20, 24 hours. So I was just wondering if the city council has done any thought about maybe putting something on the books that more closely with Grants Pass or whatever. I don't expect anything to happen. I mean, this is just something I threw at you. And I was wondering if any of you had heard about this or thought about this.
Um, hey Doug, this is Alan Sorms, the attorney. I, I would just say that, you know, Millersburg, like a lot of the other cities right now is, is following that, but for the Grants Pass decision was first adopted by the Ninth Circuit. Then there was a law that was passed by the Oregon State Legislature, essentially codifying much of the holding from the Ninth Circuit. So while the United States Supreme Court ultimately ruled in favor of Grants Pass that what their ordinance didn't violate the United States Constitution, Eighth Amendment, we are now subject to applying, you know, Oregon's laws as well with the legislature. So there's certain to be, you know, bills proposed and things like that, but for the short term, there isn't any change. And I'm talking with Kevin, you know, as of right now, we just follow the Lynn County code, which in, in the sheriff's office still has to follow the state law. So the kind of the current status is similar to the presentation that you would have seen about reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions being permitted. But there are still significant restrictions on local government as to what they can and can't do. That's based not now on federal constitution, but it's based on Oregon state law.
Right. I was just wondering if the city council was going to do anything about it or are they just going to wait and see? That's long. Okay. The other things is I brought this up. I don't know if I brought it up before, but this overpass down here on Old Salem where we go under the railroad tracks and under the freeway. There's a flashing red light there and over the past, I'd say month or so, there's been more traffic increase there of 18 wheeler type. And 18 wheelers can't come off of that road coming from Albany and turning onto Old Salem. And they substantially back up traffic there. I was wondering if, I know that's not our property. But I was wondering if the city could maybe mention it to whoever belongs to ODOT or the railroad or whoever of putting a stoplight in there would make it a little bit more easy for people to get through there.
All right, Doug, let Janelle, yeah, could you please?
So we've had some conversations with ODOT. This would be an ODOT issue, but it's a multi-jurisdictional area, ODOT, Lynn County and the city. We all care about that area, but it's really ODOT's jurisdiction. So we've had some conversations about some modifications to that area, maybe even to the on and off ramp to the south of there in the future. And one thing that has been floated is some sort of traffic control there. I don't have a final answer, but we are having some conversations about it.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a start. But the, the last thing I want to do is, is kind of a budget committee type thing. I noticed around the city that there's a lot of fire hydrant areas where the paint is almost white. It's no longer yellow. I was wondering if we could get some group like the Boy Scouts or the YMCA or whatever to go out and do that work under supervision. And it would kind of benefit both of us, the people trying to get money for the budget and the people for the, for the curves.
I think that'd be, personally, I think that's a, could be a neat project, but Janelle, you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Do you know anything more about?
So I would say this summer, we do plan to do some painting, striping. I think we need to do some striping on the streets. It's kind of general street maintenance. These aren't large cost projects, so we have the funds that we budgeted to do that. Curb painting, it, it's probably time to do some of those. The one thing I would hesitate on having volunteer groups come and do it is we want to use paint that's specific to Broadway or paint. Otherwise it comes, you know, paint even sooner.
They're just providing the manpower.
Right. So we could, we could talk about that. Normally it's just something we would have a striping contractor just do it all at once. If you're looking for a volunteer opportunity, you know, there might be some way, you know, we could partner on that. We've had groups do like storm drain stencils, not necessarily stencils, but the little symbols, that sort of thing. It, it would save the city a little bit of money, but in the long run with the contracts we do for striping, that's a pretty minor thing. So I wouldn't say that we necessarily need to find volunteer groups to go paint our curves, but we need to do it.
Because I mean, it might even help the fire department somewhat, not necessarily the stripe of the yellow or whatever, but many communities that I've lived in over the past have placed their address on the curb so that the fire department could see it after dark. I mean, during the daytime you can see the house, but after dark, a, a lot of the addresses aren't actually lighted. So that would, I mean, that would be just.
I know there was a service loss somewhere. It was going around doing that as well. But if we get an opportunity, I think it would be great to partner, especially maybe doing the hydrants. There's a safety issue there as well, being out on the roads and, and stuff, but I think it's a good point and I think it's on Janelle's radar. I appreciate bringing that forward, Doug.
And with your mobile data terminals, it's really, the addressing on the curve isn't as necessary because they have it on there. The fire department has mobile data terminals that show right where they're at and the addressing. I guess with GPS it's not really.
Technology is, is good, but you know, it's, it's still always a good visual to see that out there and anytime someone can.
I'm sorry, I'm working on 60s and 70s.
Hey, it's okay. Thank you, Doug. Anyone else in the, in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council? Anyone online? Okay. All right. Moving on then, we're going to go to new business and UGMA amendment is upon our first line of business. We will open that up to Kevin.
All right. So you have before you staff report on the action requested for council concurrence with the approval of the proposed urban growth management agreement. Amendment for properties west of the burning, north of railroad tracks. This agreement was signed by Lynn County this morning. So as we have shared with you previously and had discussions, we have met with property owners. This is part of an agreement for our access to the west, to our westernly property. With that, so this would be a mutual agreement with local farmers, friends of Lynn County is what's grabbing this. And the city legislative amendment to the 1980 UGMA between the city and county, again, for the properties west of railroad tracks, generally that area you can see in the map on the screen there. Clarifies the city will not expand to the west and as the Minson County approved it earlier today. And now if you wanted to add anything or if council has any questions regarding that. So this will grant us authority, grant me authority to enter into the IGA.
Just maybe a, a little bit of the, the context I'll speak to. So this is the, the city had a meeting with, with the neighbors and the other parties that had participated in our application for the accessway that is located immediately west of the UGB, south of Conser Road. And in that meeting, we came out with a tentative agreement where the city in the county had some commitments. So the, the city committed to communicating and encouraging with one of our neighbors about kind of the conservation easement. The city and the county agreed to work on this intergovernmental amendment, which Kevin noted was adopted this morning by the Board of Commissioners. And also Lynn County initiated some related comprehensive plan policies reflecting a lot of the similar ideas in the Lynn County Comprehensive Plan. So those are all of the things that the local governments could do and, and in exchange with that, once the local governments are able to perform, then it's the expectation that tomorrow, the other parties to that application will sign a, a settlement agreement agreeing to waive any appeal rights that might have as the decision was adopted this morning as well. So that decision will be mailed out soon. And is it, well, once it's mailed, it'll be a final written decision. So those are all of the steps and, and we had to kind of separate them into different actions in light of the fact that everybody has different roles. We as the city and the county as government bodies can enter into intergovernmental agreements. The private parties can enter into private agreements, but we, we weren't able to enter into directly with the private individuals. But this was seen as the path forward to give everybody some assurances that that while the city would have adequate land to do the development that it needed, there wouldn't be an undue impact in, in a westernly area as to the land identified there in blue in the Debra Connor Agricultural District.
I would just add, the photo that you see up there is part of the group and some of those are here. Others who participated in the meeting we had here in the conference room. And I think there was probably close to 30, you know, of different individuals involved from the city, the county, Thousand Friends, local farmers and stuff. And that were a part of the agreement that we came to. So I think that was, that was significant.
Yeah.
And.
Cooperation and.
I'll say those, I've been doing this regarding land use work a lot for a long time and, and these types of coming together is, is rare. So it's a testament to everybody that was involved in those meetings to approach them in good faith and have good open dialogue about what, what's important to them, understanding what's important to the other parties at the table. And it's agreement that staff, you know, wholly recommends council move forward with.
Well, I, I just, I know there's a lot of work went into that and I, I know it's been a little bit of a rocky road. And a couple, you know, a couple of turns here and there and, and I do appreciate all the work and the meeting and our partnership with agricultural group, farmers and to our west and just all actually just around our entire city as well as Lynn County and Thousand Friends. A lot of, as already mentioned, a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of partnering. Hopefully, you know, a building of trust as well and just to continue that relationship. Just to, and want everyone here, our community is not just the city. It's, it's everything around us. It's our, it's our county. It's our farmers. It's everyone. So again, I just really appreciate all the work and coming together and to make this happen. It's a, it's a big step in the right direction in my mind for our city and in our community around us. So thank you. Anything from our council?
I have one question. So I'm looking there and it's the area in the blue that we want to expand into, right?
Correct.
So I'm, I'm open to this for, for many reasons. I mean, one, I think we do need to conserve farm. I mean, we all got to eat. But what my question entails is if we're going to do this, so I'm looking at the first properties, that is if these tax lots are correct on the mini map there. I see those first properties that if we went west would be brought into the city. It looks like they're split by that blue line. So I, I'm curious what happened if they wanted to.
Okay, yeah, that, that.
I know we can't arbitrarily change their urban growth boundary, but I don't know, 20 years from now, if those first properties, do we say, well, this portion can, that portion can't?
So we asked kind of the, the representatives from the farming community at that, you know, what about that? Are there people that would want to, want to come in? And we were provided assurances that, no, you know, that, that they were comfortable with the timeline. That's in the agreement that, that came from them. You know, our original proposal was 20 years and they indicated that based upon the business decisions that a farmer that they would make, a, a 50 year timeline really was something that they needed and was important to them. So we made that change in, in the agreement. And so, you know, so it, it does bind us from any unilateral action. If circumstances were to change, you know, and people wanted to come in, I mean, they would have to convince the county and the city to, to, to change that. And additionally, and beyond just the intergovernmental agreement, there's the, the forthcoming policies in the, the district. So it is a pretty significant commitment from the, the, the local governments to have that boundary, but the, the farmers that are at the table gave us assurances that they were, they were comfortable with that.
And I would just mention the area north of the city that is currently within the UGMA. So that is actually still available for, for, and pretty much everything north of that line, you get into flood, flood plain, or your floodway plain anyway, so.
Actually, that's one of my questions, but thanks for clarifying that. I was curious about that line, the north line as well.
Yeah, actually moved a little further north than what probably appeared to look at what the current UGMA is, but in discussion with the farmers, it just kind of made sense with, because we do have a farmer out in that area that has expressed interest in coming in in the future. So it makes, we looked at where it would make sense for that parcel that that farmer or son has requested in the past.
Okay. And as mentioned, yeah, this is a a decision, you know, or moving forward for us as a, the governing body, Millersburg is a, is a pretty, it's a significant decision that we're making tonight. If we do move forward. Because we are, you know, making that decision for future counselors that, what will be sitting here when we're gone. So you know, I know each counselor has thought about this and has asked questions and, and looked at the, you know, what that means. And, you know, it's up for us to decide tonight. We do have a motion up there. If this is the direction we want to move in.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry, I just never seen the map before with the lines dropped, drawn. And actually, I looked at those first couple. I just wish you would have followed, tried to follow more of the property lines.
We did follow.
It does follow. It does. It just doesn't look like on that mini map.
Yeah.
It was hard on the mini map.
It's actually, it's actually forced another couple.
That's why we made the detailed maps is because it gets a little fuzzy.
Yeah.
It looks like it cuts right to the middle of those first two lots.
Okay, it actually follows our.
I just didn't want to have a property owner down the road say, what do you mean? I can do half mine, but not the other half. So yeah, that's.
I had a double take on that myself.
Okay. Thank you.
So to, any other questions in council? No. I move that the city council approved resolution number 2220213 and authorized the city manager to execute the UGMA amendment through an IGA.
Second?
All right, we got a second. We'll take a vote. All in favor, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, motion passes. Thank you. I appreciate all the work going into that. Thank you as well. So yeah, let's go in. Gina, did we get Rahm, Council Rahm and his attendance timeframe? Thank you. All right, with that, it's exciting and so we take a deep breath on and, and let's just keep, keep this moving forward. Next item on the agenda though is the Parkway bid award.
So we opened bids. My next slide has the date on it, but a few weeks ago on transition Parkway. So tonight we wanted to go over the bid award with council. So just for big picture, in case anyone's not aware of what the transition Parkway project is, it's a new road. Multi-use path linear park, south of Conser Road, and it's long and skinny. Schedule A, I'll just describe it in schedules. Yeah, is what you see on the screen there in blue is the eastern portion of the project. It's about a thousand feet, includes the road, water main, linear park, everything in that area. Schedule B is just a water main over on the western edge and actually it goes all the way up to Woods Road there. Sorry, Woods and Conser Road there where it ties into the water, but that's about a thousand or 1,200 feet of water main on the western end of that project. And then schedule C is everything else in between that ties it all together. We also had some bid alternates in the bid documents and they were for different retaining wall materials because we will have a retaining wall along the north side of transition Parkway's outside of the park there to make up some grade. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is the summary of the bids and this was in the council packet that we opened on July 11th. We had seven bidders. Emery and Sons was the low bid for the total schedules A and B. So schedules A and B were the base bid. So that's what we published as the basis for who we would award to. We do have some prices for schedule C, which you'll see in just a moment. So this is the full bid tab. There's a lot here. Sorry for all the numbers. The bottom ta, table there has all the bid alternates, but the top one has schedule A, B, and C. If we don't do any bid alternates. So one thing that we have seven good, solid contractors who do this kind of work felt really good about the spread on the bids. Everything came in just a little higher than our engineer's estimate, which was 12 to 13 and a half million for the total of all the schedules. So our low bid was 14.3 million-ish. Emery and Sons ended up being the low bid for both the totals of A and B and when you add schedule C in as well. So just wanted to point that out. The bid alternates for the retaining wall materials, the way those came in, what we makes me recommend, we don't go with any alternates. The, the base product that we had, quote, had them bid on was the one we want. The idea was that these bid alternates, I mean, might save some money by going with a different material. That's not the way the bids came out. And it's interesting how the contractors priced them that was not consistent, but we're going to recommend not going with any bid alternates and just sticking with the original material. The, if you're looking at those and a little puzzled by them, it's labor is probably the biggest difference in them. And the gabions, although material should be a lot less, apparently the labor was going to be quite a bit longer. Oh, gabions are like the wire baskets that you fill with rocks. That you see, and, and they can be made to look nice, but that wasn't our first choice. We just thought it might save us some money, but apparently according to the bids it won't. And you'll notice one of the bidders was.
Extremely high. Is that what you're gonna say?
The guess is that they misunderstood the, the way that alternates were being structured, but they were not in our lower, they weren't our little bidder or even our second or third lowest bidder, so it doesn't really change that. And then the last one there was concurrent award. That was if we awarded schedule C upfront right now, would, what would they give us for discount? Some chose to put a number in there. Some said it doesn't make any difference. So with that, I'm going to recommend award of schedules A and B now to Emery and Sons. And go ahead and go to the next slide. I guess I talked about most of this already, but one thing I did want to go over briefly is schedule C, what the plan is for that. To get that because I know that's, that's going to be a question. So we need to get schedules A and B going right now to meet some deadlines that we have coming up with Project DeLorean. We've already talked about that is south of schedule A and the water main for Timber Lab, which is looking, going to the west. So we need to get those underway and going. We did structure our bids so that we can award schedule C within the next six months or so, and we got the pricing for that. We don't have to do that. We can pull it back, go back out for bid. It will be a negotiation with the contractor because it'll be a change order to amend that in if we choose to do that. And the reason we don't want to do it, we're not able to do it right now is we have the funding for A and B. We don't have the funding for all of C yet because we're still waiting on grant agreements with the state for multiple pieces and possibly some property sales. And when SDCs come in from the companies that will be developing, those will go toward the, toward the project, but those come in at the time of building. So all of that is the timing for schedule C. We're not ready to make that award yet, but we do expect to be making that award in the next six months or so. And rec, fully recognizing that we need the road to go through to make this, you know, complete this route. So we could also, if we have to, look at options for just getting the road in and the rough grading for the park done, that sort of thing. If we had to reduce scope for cost, but we don't think we're going to be there. We just need all those pieces to come together at the end before we can let you know what we're going to do with schedule C. Are there any questions on that?
So the schedule C, we can, we can, we can go back and within six months and ask contractor to be able to provide that work at the price that they gave.
Yes, and we built some escalation into our bid documents already. So if we award it within three months of original bid award, we look at the cost indexes and escalate based on cost index. So we, we tried to account for those things that a contractor would be worried about, right? That they're not going to bid a project now that might get awarded a year later and know whether that
Everything's going up.
Pricing is still going to be good. So, but because it's a change order to, to amend it into this contract, if we choose to do that and keep rolling with the same contractor, there's always negotiation with that. So we'll just have to go over that with them. But they know, all the bidders knew this was the intent of the, of how we're structuring the project.
What's, is that slide going back? Maybe it's here. Okay, it's probably up there with the schedule C. Yeah, thank you.
And part of the reason I didn't put this out in the packet is because the contractors, the full bid tabulation has not been shared with the contractors yet. That will go out tomorrow with the notice of intent to award and then we'll have our seven day protest period. So all this information will go to the contractors, but right now all they've seen until today is schedules A and B and the total of A and B because that's what we read in the bill. Because that's what the word is based on.
Okay. It's a lot of money. Big decision. Another one. Council, any questions for Janelle? You know, it's been, we've been looking at this project for a number of years now and getting the bids. It's exciting, very exciting for our city to potentially enter into this and this work start.
One other thing I probably should have said about the costs, you know, our, our engineer's estimate was done last October. So that's another reason why the prices are a little more now than when we had our last estimate done. And then we did break this into all the separate pieces after that estimate was done. We knew we were close to getting real pricing by bidding, so we didn't want to spend thousands of dollars on another estimate. But if you're wondering why we're a little above our engineer's estimate, those are probably some reasons But if you're wondering why we're a little above our engineer's estimate, those are probably some reasons why the bids came a little higher, plus just construction costs.
Yeah, and it's, it wasn't really actually that far off, and if you're looking at the, the big picture.
We'd always hope it would come a little lower.
Yeah, we would hope, but, yeah.
So Janelle, just with dealing with large projects for a long time, I've always closely looked at those low bids. Because historically, granted, the projects I've worked with are much larger, but a lot of times, companies will bid low just to get the contract. We don't have any concern because, I mean, I'm looking at it and Emery and Sons is ten percent below the average. I mean, do we really think that, and that's just for schedule A. It comes back up quite a bit when you look at the total project. But I just want to make sure, work, that they can actually do it for this and that we don't have an issue down the road.
Yeah, that's a great question, and that's part of the, looking at the spread of the bids, right? Like, somebody's got to be a little bitter. And how much lower are they? Did they miss something? There's, contractors will always find things to try to change orders during construction. Uncomfortable with them as a good bidder. They've worked here before. They, our engineer on this project has been, had them on several other projects recently. They really wanted to get the work in this area as the way I understood it, and I've talked with them a little bit, so. I, about this particular project since we did. So I, I don't believe there is any intentional playing games there by this particular contract, contractor, and I haven't heard any history of them, you know, being known for that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's actually really impressive. We got, I got seven bids, all local. The majority are local, or maybe they were all local. I know Emery and Sons works. Yeah, and they work a lot around here, so I think it's, it's a good showing, for sure, I think so.
I would just add, Emery and Sons has been around for a number of years, and I, they've never had a reputation of coming in and bidding low and then coming in and asking for a lot of change orders.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Ready to award?
I move to award the Transition Parkway project, schedules A and B to Emery and Sons in the total amount of six million, two hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars, ninety-three cents, and authorize the city manager to sign all documents.
Second.
All right, we got a second. We'll take a vote. All in favor, signify by eye.
Eye.
All pose same sign. Motion passes. All right, thank you. And thank you for all the work as staff. Appreciate it. With that, this was a special meeting to sort of address these two agenda topics. Any closing comments from council or staff? Okay, not hearing any. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.